You're watching Access to La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the May 18th meeting of the Michigan City Commission for Women. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesseslaporte county.org.
All right, so calling to order a commission for women's Thursday, May 18th meeting. Rule call. I will go ahead and do that here. Fay Moore, present. Veronica Martin, present. Albertine Allen, present. Bonnie Schaff, present. Christina Isabel, present. Linda Conley, absent. And that's it. Angie, absent. And we have some guests today. We have our soon to be commissioner Laura Wick here.
Lori Wink.
Lori Wink, thank you. For the League of Women Voters. We have to still receive the letter and then hopefully next month it will be a full fledged commissioner. Great. We are short the secretary position for tonight. Will someone volunteer to take our minutes?
I'll take if somebody else will take, then we can compare because I don't do good taking minutes.
Does anyone else want to do it versus that?
I don't do very well taking minutes. You might get jumped crazy. Anyone?
All right, so. We'll have two people Veronica and Albertine taking minutes for us today so that we can compare and contrast. Approval of minutes. We will still be holding on to the March, we will need to look at March 8th eventually.
So why are we not going March 8th?
That is the subcommittee meeting.
Oh, okay.
Great. So we have March 16th minutes.
Can I make a motion to accept March 16th minutes?
Second. All right. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, March 16th passed. We are on to our April minutes. That was sent to you in an email.
I move that we approve the minutes of April 20th. I second that motion.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. So the next. Oh, that's funny, I wrote May minutes on there, sorry guys, it's just now May. So we're just on to the subcommittee meeting, which we will get to next month. Great. Treasurers' report.
Does anyone need a copy or did you get, I had emailed the doc? Yeah, there are a couple of bodies here. Okay. We had a balance at the beginning of last month of $20,333.04. Do you have that? Okay. And then we made five dispersments, $400 for Nikia bonds for catering the upcoming roundtable next week. Women's Care Center, $1,000 sponsorship. Michigan City Area Schools Nursing Departments for autoscopes, $500. Cool Springs School, the counseling department for a sensory room is $500. And Brianna Chambers for the IU Honors Program, $1,000. So the total dispersment was $3,400. There was no income for the month. So our ending balance as of today is $16,933.04. I'll make a motion, we approve the treasurer's three point.
I'll second that motion.
Who second?
Fay. All in favor? Aye. And any opposed? Great. And now we are on to our funding request for this evening. We have the Salvation Army Michigan Cities here. Just to again go over what the commission funds. Women's Commission mission is to ensure that women and men have equal opportunity to function fully and optimally as citizens of the city, as equal participants in the economy and politics of government and education and social development and the system of justice and in all other facets of life. The commission can use its funds to pay for the following purposes. Materials and supplies, education to the public, including promotional education, null and training supplies, community events, special projects, sponsorships for special programs. Just have that in our heads as we will go ahead and we have Jessica here and Major Simpson.
Hi.
I don't really want to mess with you. Want to sit here or get a chair?
Just want a camera picture.
Come on in, come with it into the table.
I got a short chair, yes. Well, thank you for having us. We're always excited to come and talk to people about the programs we have at the Salvation Army. Just because we really believe that the programs we have are meant to meet community need and meant to be there to really address issues in the community. You know, Salvation Army across the world is a little different in every community and that's because we don't come in and say, we only do one or two things. We come in and say, what does this community need? And so we try and fit our programs and we try to develop our programs based on community need. And one of the programs that Salvation Army does here in Michigan City is our Pathway of Hope program. That program specifically is for people who are, have children in the household to help them address some of their issues to break the cycle of poverty. And this last year, we've been doing some really interesting things to help address that. But first of all, with the Pathway of Hope program, people come in and we first assess their motivation to change. And after we assess their motivation to change, we look at what their strengths are and what their level of hope is that they can actually make things change in their life. And then once we assess that, we kind of look at a self. Oh, I'm going to lose the word. I have it right here on the tip of my tongue. Yes. Self-sufficiency matrix.
Thank you.
Got the first, last word and put it together. Self-sufficiency matrix. But just basically, there's about 14 areas where you kind of look at on where are you self-sufficient in these areas? And then once we look at that, we look at, okay, what do you think will help you break your cycle that you're in at this point with your household and your family? And sometimes that's not picking what they're weak in. Sometimes that's picking what they're strong in. And when you pick what a person is strong in and you grow that and they become even stronger and better, sometimes those things that they're weak in kind of fall into line too. They develop. One of the things, I had mentioned, one of the things we've been doing this year is we've also added alongside our Pathway of Hope program, a program called Bridges Out of Poverty. And it's a 12-week class that we teach that really addresses a whole spectrum of things in people's lives, not just financial issues that addresses that. But there's so many things that keep people in poverty, you know? It's not just finances. There's some people who have a really good income and still live in poverty, you know? And why is that? And so we look at all the things that address poverty and how people can maybe look at all those areas in order to change their life. I believe Miss Moore came to several of those classes and can even speak to the Bridges Out of Poverty curriculum. But we've run three classes now and we've graduated 18 people from that class. And once, a lot of times people who are in Pathway of Hope, we really, really encourage them to take that class. And then also we just advertise the class to anyone. And anyone who comes into that class, we try and then bring them into Pathway of Hope. Because once you take the class and have kind of all the tools, then if you come into Pathway of Hope and have 12 to 18 months of case management to help you really resource and address those goals that you've done, it's really a beautiful thing that somebody can come in and really just have a total change of their whole outlook on life and everything that they do. We've seen some incredible stories come out of our Pathway, our Bridges curriculum on people saying, I'm going to make some significant changes because I don't want to live in poverty the rest of my life and I don't want my kids to learn this way of life. So it's a powerful thing to partner that Bridges with Pathway of Hope also. So.
The only thing I'd like to add to that, the important thing I think about Pathway of Hope is that it's intense case management and it's one-on-one. It's not taking courses, it's not learning how to budget. It's one-on-one with the case manager or social worker that we have on staff. And I come from the world of development, she's a social worker, so this is her world. So I think it's interesting to watch our social worker work with the families and the different resources that she connects them with. Like she said, it's not always just finances. One of the families that we worked with was a single dad who was widowed and left with five daughters to raise. And one of the things that she connected him to was grief counseling. You can't be your best self for your kids if your cup's not full. And so that's just one example of the different resources that she's able to work with. And it's unlimited, you know, childcare, transportation, education, those are all things. But there's so many different ways that she finds ways to help people. And I think that's the important part of it, that it's one-on-one, which is why we can serve a lot more families through something like Bridges, which is more structured. But the fact that this is so fluid that fits each family's needs, I think that's the best thing about Pathway of Hope.
And since the program has run for a number of years, have you seen some good results?
We have. We've seen some really cool things happen with some of our graduates. We had one gal who got her license in, oh, I can't remember what it was now. It was something in the medical field. And she was able to get a license or a job in that field and is thriving. We have a grandmother who gained custody of her three grandchildren. And she has been able to really stabilize for those grandchildren. Plus she also had a special need adult child of her own and she was able to get him into programs at Paladin. And she was able to eventually buy her own home. And so she's a homeowner now and really moved through so many things with the support of Pathway of Hope. We also have another person who graduated from a program early on and she had had a house fire, you know? And when she had the house fire, she and her five kids kind of got farmed out to friends and family. And so by the time she finished the program, she was able to get her family back under one house and start her own business. So it was a really cool thing. So there's just been some really neat success stories come out of it.
That's great.
Yeah.
How many weeks did you say to Pathway of Hope?
Pathway of Hope is 12 to 18 months.
Oh, 12 to 18.
Yes. So it's a long-term program and we really invest in people to make a difference, you know? We are committed to our short-term programs like a food pantry, you know? But if we give a person food, you know, they can eat for a few days with the food that we give them and then the need comes back. But if we work intensely on case management with them for 12 to 18 months and really break the cycle that they're in and have significant impact and then they don't need the services, how much better have we really done there? So it's important to do that emergency work plus that intensive work so that families and children, our future, you know, is impacted positively.
Yeah. That's great. Any other questions from the commissioners?
Yeah, what time do you offer those classes?
The Pathway of Hope or the Bridges?
Pathway of Hope.
Pathway of Hope is not a class, it's case management. So we do it based on the person's schedule. It can be during the day. Our case manager often stays until 5:00, 5:30, 6 o'clock at night to meet with people. We're extremely flexible and we want, we're make sure that we're available at the person's time. So there's not a set time and we do work around people's schedule.
So we do have an upcoming Bridges class starting.
August 2nd.
I'd be happy to get you guys that information if you have anybody that you want to forward it on to. That's the 12-week sessions and they're held at the Salvation Army.
Yeah, on Wednesdays at 5:00 p.m.
I'll get you the information.
Yeah, Wednesdays at 5:00 p.m. is when we do the Bridges class. And we purposely do that kind of at that time. We've found that we get bigger crowds at that time because it's right after work. People can come from work, pick up kids, bring the kids with you. We provide childcare, we provide dinner for that night so that they don't even have to prepare dinner after the class is done. They can take the kids home and go to bed. So everybody gets fed and then we also provide some incentives with that class also that if you come for four weeks, you'll get a gas card for $50. And then if you come for eight weeks, you get a grocery certificate. And at the end of it, you can get assistance with rent or utility. So there's some, there's some good incentives there. But almost everybody invariably says by the time they get to the end of the class, if they make it to the end of the class, they said, those incentives were nothing compared to the knowledge and support that I gained. And those incentives were nice and probably got me attracted, but what I gained was so much more. So it's a really cool program.
How do your participants in Pathway of Hope find you?
We usually recruit them. So like we go out and do a lot of community events and promote that project. And then our caseworker will make appointments with people to come in and meet with her to learn more about that. We have people who we provide assistance to. We just recently went through our utility assistance and we'll circle back around and call all those people then and ask them about their interest in Pathway of Hope and try and get them enrolled that way. Last night there was a baby shower that Franciscan prenatal program did down at the library. And we were there and really promoting Pathway of Hope there.
I think it's interesting too with the holiday assistance. A lot of people know the Salvation Army for getting Christmas assistance. So people who've come to us for that aren't always typical clients through the year. So that's another way to reach out to people who might not be, you know, at the technical federal level of poverty level, but still struggling and clearly have kids in the family that are there for Christmas help. So that's another good resource for finding people who might be a good candidate for Pathway of Hope.
We find too that, you know, we can send lots of letters, lots of flyers, lots of postcards, lots of brochures, lots of advertisement. But the thing that really gets the people interested is when we pick up the phone and call them and say, hey, are you interested? You know, or we see them face-to-face in an event and say, hey, are you interested? Or they show up to, you know, an open house for either Pathway of Hope or Bridges. And we say, hey, are you interested in this? So we try and have that face-to-face, either face-to-face or at least phone call time so that it's a human interaction to a human interaction. That's what really locks them in, is that human interaction.
That's great. Do you think you have more than 30 coming to the table for this round?
I hope so. I pray so.
Yeah.
So.
Any other questions at this time?
Just please see the catch budget.
It's here. And it looks like you're getting sufficient, I mean, the funds from other people. So we're a smaller.
Yeah, this year we did request money from MCCEC and we typically have received that. However, we were not funded by them this year. So the $40,000 that we have on there, that was anticipated. That was last, yeah, $40,000 that was anticipated, that was last year and we did not receive it this year.
Okay. But you're still going to make the program happen.
We're committed to it, yeah. Yeah, we're just going to keep looking for other funds.
Yeah. Yeah. That's what we all had to do today. They're out there though. Great. Do we need any other information before we let them go? And we'll get to this at the end of the meeting.
I don't need anything else.
Great. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it and call us anytime. We love talking about Salvation Army and we love to get tours. Yeah, we'll check out the building. Yes.
Yes, our hallway is a maze right now from the closest we drive, but we just consider that a blessing. Anyway, come see us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. On to our next item, which is next week is our second roundtable luncheon, May 25th, Thursday. The opioids and women's health. Looks like everything is going as smoothly as it can happen for an event that we're producing pretty fast. As of right now, I have 47 reservations. Let me just add 47, 48, 49, 50, we're at 50 reservations right now. So, which is good. I think for me, my goal would be between 50 and 75. We do have enough for 100, knowing that we had 77 for our International Women's Day. So.
Christina. I'm sorry. And at 50, did you include us?
Yes. Yes. How many reservations did we have last time and how many walk-ins did we have? Yes, so the last time, I think I had, I think we were at 45, 50 reservations and we had like 25, 30 walk-ins. So I'm assuming we're going to get about that same amount of walk-ins as well. That would hit us at the 75 again. Okay. Which could happen. I still think, I'm not sure if we're hitting the audience that we would like here as meaning I haven't quite heard anything from the tribe. Both of us have tried the La Porte County Drug Task Force. The police department, haven't heard. Maybe the schools, we still haven't heard yet. So there's potentially some missing important audience to this event. So if you can just kind of keep spreading the word in that way. If there's anyone that you know that can kind of support in that way to help get them there. Because I think it's going to be really important information. As a matter of fact, when I was in my car for this meeting, there was a story on NPR about the deaths of opioids and fentanyl. Right now it is the leading cause of death for 18 to 45-year-olds right now. And it's not just, you know, it's everybody, it's hitting everybody. So 109,000 deaths from fentanyl in 2022. The interesting thing about this epidemic, I would say, is that the data collecting is really challenging. And so even to get the right information and for us to know what exactly is in our community is challenging. So I think this is a good time to have this conversation, to not just create awareness in our community, but also again, that same idea of community advocacy. How can we support, you know, who are we in the community that can shine some light on this issue with families that may not think that they have this problem going on? But how do we help everybody in our community with it? So I do think it's going to be a really interesting program. Charles Motley's still good to go, right? Okay, good. And Veronica will be one of the guest panelists, although I didn't send you something. I need to send you something to be there, right?
Yeah.
So I can. Okay, great. The guest panel might be a little more flexible, meaning that because we haven't quite gotten enough people to commit to it. So it might just be that I will reach out to you to talk at a certain point. And a couple other people just to get their sides and takes and to push the conversation further. But we'll do a similar thing that we did and we might have more time this time to kind of really get the table conversations into some interesting places and all that. Could I ask, when are you going to eat? Are you going to eat at the beginning at 11:00 when everyone arrives? Yes. So I will remind, we're going to try to get Nikia there a little earlier this time so we can be set up and ready to go. So when people walk in, then we can go right, grab your sandwich, grab your table. And then we'll, you know, be able to run a little smoothly. Because the last time I was panicking, I was looking at the clock. I'm like, I'm going to cancel that, I'm not going to talk about that. So we don't want to be on that stage again. But yeah, so 11 to 1. I did notice Bonnie, in the one email you sent out, you said 12 to 2. Oh, I, oh, great, okay. Okay. Yeah. Okay. But it's 11 to 1, I know. The last one was 12 to 2. Okay. If we can, Sarah, who's not here tonight, but she can be at our Thursday event because I guess they're out of school maybe or something. So we should be there to set up by, I think like 8:30. Because I don't know, I will be able to know more when I go to the space on Monday to confirm how they're going to have, if they're going to have everything set up for us ahead of time or if we need to do that.
Where is it again?
It is at Salvation Army.
Right, okay. I made a note.
We did it pretty fast. We did it in about an hour the last time. Our setup. Are you going to have the brown paper on the tables this time? Are you using that to write on? To take notes on? Yes. Okay. That took a while to put. That did take a while. We'll do it differently this time, just.
You can look at the tables and see how they are and then you can cut the paper beforehand.
Yeah.
You measure it.
That's true. I can rotate it.
It saves us a lot of time.
Yeah.
But we really didn't run into the time thing. It went fast.
I think we were ready plenty growing. Yeah. I'm sorry, I can't be there on Thursday.
We're going on vacation.
Funeral that day.
Oh, okay. We'll let you slide.
At the same exact time, 11:00. So. And local.
Sorry to hear that, Bonnie.
So yeah, so if we can all just arrive by 8:30, how about that? And then 11 is our go time.
You can be there. I can be there. Oh, good.
Sure. Thank you.
Can we go back? We never introduce our new board member. Our new commissioner.
Thank you, Fay. But I'm not official yet. She's not official yet. So yes, we did. But. It's not official yet? No.
No, the LWB needed to send a letter to Gayle Nilo and didn't do that yet. So she hasn't been, Lori hasn't been sworn in yet. But Lori Wink is going to represent the League of Women Voters in the, anyway. Very happy to be joining you.
It's my honor.
Glad to have you.
All right. Great. We'll get it straightened out. Yeah. Yeah. Hey, Angie.
Hi.
We're just completing our roundtable luncheon. Will you be able to join us next Thursday?
I have a training at that time.
Oh, geez.
And I'm going to make sure I get, start pushing out social media. I haven't done my part yet.
Okay, yeah. We have, at the moment, we have 47 reservations, so.
And what's the capacity?
100.
Okay.
We were saying from the last one, we had about 30 walk-ins. So that pushes us up to that 75, which is fine. I'm sorry, Lori, do you know everybody here?
Yes. Well, I don't think I do. I have not known Veronica before.
I have not known Veronica before, but.
Hi.
Hi.
Nice to meet you. Good.
Sorry.
Um, and we are still short one other commissioner, our city council appointee.
Really?
Yeah. But we.
We just received the number.
What sector?
Yes.
What sector would it be? Who, what?
Um, sector, I'm not sure. We just need someone from the city council. I was approaching someone, but they haven't turned in the form yet. Who's a business owner.
Oh, so we're waiting on something to be turned in?
Leslie Cole turned her application in.
Right.
A couple, like, months ago.
And I sent that email.
Yes.
I'll, I'll, I'll follow up. Because, um, I remember when that happened, we submit, cause we went back and forth. So it needs to be put on the next agenda then.
Yeah.
And what's her name again?
Leslie Cole is her name. And then there was one other person that was interested in, that I was interested in, just cause they're a business, an entrepreneur. Thought that might be a nice thing to have on the, to round us out a little bit. But again, yeah. But again, to remind everyone that we do need to kind of be a bit more forward because in December, we, we will be losing one, two, three, four commissioners. So that's gonna be a big push to find the right people to be on the commission and to get them excited about what, you know, what, what it is that this commission is about.
Right, we, we can also, the commissioner can also re-up for another term. They don't have to go on.
True.
So.
Yes. It is true.
The one, two, three, four can re-up for another.
One, two, three, four, better on ten years.
Eight years.
Just, just a thought.
So probably in, um, when we do our annual meeting, um, we will kind of really talk through that, in how to approach people and then confirm. So by September, we need your comp, you know, if you're gonna stay or go by then. So then we really can promote that. And I will let this luncheon talk about needing more commissioners and needing more women to get involved. So that is on the radar. Great. Anything else on the May twenty fifth at this time? Great. The one thing that I did not put on here and that I'd like to add into our agenda is the Juneteenth. Can, um, do I need to get a vote on that to add that into?
Cause everybody has general consensus, usually to see, is it okay with everybody?
Is it okay if we talk about Juneteenth?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So Juneteenth, that is next month. So I was flying.
Okay, Juneteenth is next month and, um, we as a commission did, um, make a recommendation, I mean, did make a sponsorship of a thousand dollars for the Juneteenth celebration. The Juneteenth celebration is still in plan. And I did send, uh, the current members a copy of the flyer. This flyer is just still trying to get sponsors and trying to get people to aware of that the Juneteenth is, is not in, uh, in stone. So what they're planning so far for the Juneteenth celebration is on Sunday, June eighteenth, they're gonna do a dad's grill cook-off. And the dads are expected to be there at eight o'clock. And, um, the judging will start place at twelve o'clock. So that's so that they'll have four hours to actually prepare their meats at their, um, cook-off and then it'll be, uh, judged. It's free admission. So we're actually inviting the people to start coming around eleven or twelve. So it's by far them to start off and coming. And then, and there will be giveaways and raffles throughout the day. There'll be free hot dogs and burgers and there'll be free health screenings. They'll have physicians speaking on health. They'll have a therapist speaking on mental health. They'll have community resources and vendors, line dancing, gospel music, jazz music and praise teams. There'll be a DJ and music in the park all day. And there will be an open mic. At one o'clock.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Finish, go ahead, I'm sorry.
At one o'clock, they're gonna have Ron, I have to spell it, R O N Q U I.
Wow.
It's Rocky.
Rocky, a personal trainer and a nutrition coach. He will be working out with the dads. Then after he finished working out with the dads for about thirty minutes, then they will have women working it out with Aubria and she's a wellness coach. And they'll have the women working it out. Those are two things that are actually gonna be, you know, timed. And they'll have a DJ announcing, you know, that the dads have what time for them to work out and then they have the women working out. So I don't know if they'll have people signing up there or have it pre-registered. They, they still working on, on that.
Is, is June eighteenth Father's Day?
Yes. Yes, it is. It is Father's Day.
I'm feeling those.
And, uh, the theme is unified in freedom. Galatians five and one. Monday, June nineteenth, um, they're expecting to have a freedom march. It'll be in the park. Right now, like we say, we're still working it out. We're trying to get the soul steppers to lead the march. But we figured that'll be more exciting and get more people out there for the march. And that's expected to start at ten o'clock. And then the community picnic, people just bring your own grills, your own, uh, blankets and food already prepared or, you know, there's a couple of grills out at the park. This is all taking place by the amphitheater. I forgot. All of this will be taking place by the amphitheater. You know where the stage is at Washington Park? Okay, and so they, we're expecting people, we're not providing any, they're not providing any tents. You have to bring your own tents, your own. There will be picnic tables out there from the park to park. They have requested picnic tables, more picnic tables than, than, that are already out there. No alcohol. And it'll be free admission. Again, they'll have giveaways, raffles, community resources, jazz, vendors, dancing, DJ, live entertainment, bring your own grill and lawn chairs. And all of this is by the guy, form and amphitheater at Washington Park. So once they actually get it together, hoping by the first, uh, weekend, June, they will have an actual flyer going, and I can pass this up. If you wanna take a picture.
Great.
And I talked, I might not have had a chance, but. Might not have a chance to, um, get everything written down. So if you take a picture, you'll have it all. But I did send it to you by email. Uh, but I didn't have Laura's.
I'll send email. Yeah. Any questions? Do we, so we are planning on having a table in a booth. Do we need to supply a little, we need all, we need to supply all that, okay?
Oh, if you get there early enough, you can get by a tree.
You don't, you won't even need it.
Right, if you get there early enough, get it, get by a tree.
Cause it's, it's a lot of shade over there.
Yes.
Okay, cool. And then, and so we should be set up by, do we know that? Cause this will be right while the meeting on Thursday, but we'll need to know this.
Are we gonna do Monday only? Or are we doing Sunday and Monday?
I think it's one day, but I don't know.
Monday is the official federal holiday. Some people, I don't know, have it off, some people might still not have it off. But it is the official holiday and that's why, um.
Did they say what, if it was too, what, did they give an expectation on like the health resources? When they're gonna be there? Cause it might be better if we were there whenever the health.
I was gonna ask, what, what health screening you're gonna do?
I don't know what health screen is they were actually gonna do. I know that, uh, they're working, I know Nyla and also, um, Health Link, both have, um, made a commitment, I know that.
So we should see what they're doing, see if there's something.
See, I don't wanna duplicate, uh.
Yeah.
They, the, uh, you, the two numbers down here, Jackie, um, can I read that back?
And Jackie and Denise.
Jackie and Denise.
Then I'll talk to Jackie this evening.
They'll have, they, they have that information. Like I said, they're still in the planning stage. So I won't know that. I did attend the, the meeting, but we didn't discuss which health screening, health screenings they were gonna do.
Is it from like twelve to five? Is it, so how do we, how long do we know that?
Yeah, we need to find out.
Like we were saying, um, basically if the Sat, uh, Monday, we're saying was start at ten o'clock with the march.
Right.
So I would think that the people would be setting up probably at ten o'clock while we're marching. The march is gonna probably just be from the splash pad at the zoo or maybe at the, the Grove, Sunset Grove.
Yeah.
Maybe at Sunset Grill. It'd be in the park.
Right.
To the amphitheater, so it's not a long.
That's smart.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a long march. It's just, um.
But I'm just wondering, is it Sunday and Monday at the table or is it just Monday or? I guess we need to find that out.
Well, the sense of, of here, the screens and.
It said the screens are on Sunday.
See, I think it's Sunday.
It said the screens on Sunday and on Monday just said community resources.
Okay, so I guess you can probably pick.
Okay.
So probably Sunday for the, um, would probably be the better day to be out there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the, for us, the commission.
Yeah.
Would probably be the Sunday afternoon.
Yeah.
Basically, um, they're expecting the people, like I said, the judging starts at twelve.
Okay.
And they were saying that the people were probably set up, their things around twelve. Want to judge in the, the, um. So I'm thinking, I'm thinking, they, cause they were saying after church.
Yeah, so in church, you know.
Most people out by one.
By ten and where, where?
Well, getting out, out of church. Like, they're starting at ten and eleven and twelve.
Yeah, we're out by eleven.
Most churches by, by one. So if we're setting up the table, we probably would need to be there at noon to set the tables up. And then by, uh, one, the people will probably start coming.
Yeah.
Until, um, seven, they said, I believe. Hold on, let me get, they did have a timeframe for that. Yeah, it was, uh, eight, they had to be out of the park by nine. So they were thinking about ending at eight. Ending at eight and they supposed to be out of the park by nine.
Wow, that's, that's a lot.
Yeah, probably, I would think by then is, if people are out, you know, after, I think the, the biggest bulk of people will be there, uh, coming out of church. So from twelve to five is probably the biggest timeframe.
So, and then I think if we have at least two people in that booth, you know.
So.
At a time, that would be great, so. If we do like a twelve to two and a two to four and.
Whatever people can.
Yeah, whatever.
So we have a table there, is that the idea and that will be, what will be?
Resources.
We'll have some resources out.
Presents.
Um, okay, we actually don't have, I mean, we kind of need to produce, I think, something that has a little more of, uh, res- resources on it.
And our meeting time and date.
Yeah.
To get more people, you know, maybe to start participating or coming. That might not be a bad idea.
So it seems as if we might need a little subcommittee to maybe make sure that we have what we need for that event together. Would anyone be willing to support that process?
I, I can help, I'll be there most of the day.
It's more about the, um, what we're, we're going to have at the table.
I bet you'll help me with that.
Yes. I can help you, great. Angie, Bonnie and I will.
Have we talked, have, have you all thought about, um, maybe getting a, a shirt or something like that?
Well, we do have a new logo. So we, we do have the ability to do shirts.
We'd all wear the shirts.
We had talked about, we had talked about doing a brochure at one time.
That too.
What's that?
Now we have Lori, we got somebody who can help with the brochure.
Yes, white flyer.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna put you on this.
But will we be, am I have brochures ready by June eighteenth?
We could, we can do that, but we should have a motion today, a vote on it today to authorize spending and spending so much.
Good idea.
I don't know how much money. How much do you think?
Well, again, um, it is right. We definitely with my resource list of a lot of the, um, organizations that we had at our last talk, probably some of the organizations that will be at this, the next roundtable, we have some resources from, from what we, our events that we cut down next. But I think it'd be valuable information, so how we're laying that out.
And I guess you'd wanna think about, you know, shelf life. It's probably something you would produce, you know, in quantity and use for our events, so.
I have a talk to Reprographic Arts about donating some.
There you go.
And the other thing, uh, if we have like some of the partners, especially ones that spoke before at our event, even if you just had their information on the table, I think that would be helpful too.
Yeah.
You know, if they're not gonna have a table that we, you know, support their stuff.
We do have a lot of the stuff from the ACLU.
Okay.
You know, just some good, it was just a really good information, honestly.
I still recommend a shirt. I can't make a motion for anything, but I was just saying, um, I like the idea of the logo with a shirt for everybody.
That's nice. Talking about logo here.
We designed the logo.
Is it this one right here on the?
Vina.
Vina Kukla. She's the audience sister. She used to run the, um,
Hey, I wanna know if you did that nice flyer that you passed around, that's pretty eye-catching.
I think Jackie, um, had that done up.
Yes.
Mark Jones.
Catches your attention.
Sorry, this was on my, my notes here, you guys, but you can see the, that's our logo. And it's in purple, it's in pur- we can do it in purple, black. I mean, we can do it in any, any color really, but.
Okay.
It's just nice.
And the tablecloths are.
Reprographic, do the shirts, don't they? You'll see it real quick.
Yeah.
What do we think, shirts are roughly, um, between about fifteen at least, I'd say.
Let's see, we're running here, so let's do, um, just a quick.
Do you want me to call Reprographic, since they?
Fifteen is probably, that's fine. Fifteen dollars is probably right.
Yeah, I think so. So if we do ten, that's a hundred and fifty. I don't know why you have to use up my calculator for that. I don't know, I can admit it, I can. I don't know, I don't know, it was turned.
Oh, man, we don't have to really look at it.
Well, we have.
So is there a motion on the floor?
I would recommend just saying two hundreds after two hundred dollars, something like that.
But then what about, um, if we print anything, if we do, create something, you think fifty dollars is enough for that?
Three hundred dollars probably.
For shirts and.
More likely, I mean, we're giving, giving out thousands and thousands every single month to other organizations. I think we should do this to promote ourselves. I mean, we don't spend very much on promoting ourselves, so.
Yeah, so how much are we gonna?
Up to three hundred dollars for promotional.
Promotional.
Promotion.
Can I make a motion on that? And how much are we gonna spend on the two shirts?
Well, that's.
We're not gonna include that a hundred and fifty. That's not very much money to, uh, spend on print material.
They don't charge that much, I mean, at, at Reprographic, if we're gonna do a one pager, to, to start with, it won't, it won't be a whole lot.
He's real reasonable.
Yeah, so I, I think three hu- three hundred cover the shirts and the printing for now.
So you make, you may make a motion sponsor. But to set up, don't they charge the setup? He, he, you send your stuff out there, you take it to him and he goes from that.
And if we allow them to put, you know, print by Reprographic Arts, I'm sure. Yeah, yeah, it won't be that much.
Okay.
So someone make a motion.
So, um, I think Bonnie made a motion to up to three hundred dollars.
I move that we allow up to three hundred dollars for promotional expenses.
Give me one second.
I'll second that motion.
Seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay. Great. And then Angie, Bonnie, Christina, and I'm gonna put you in there, Lori, um, if we can just connect, um. What it is that we're going to create, or would, make sure we have the materials we want. Okay, great, so we'll probably have to get meeting sooner than later on that. Great, any other, oh, and then in terms of those to be at the booth. We will have our meeting on June fifteenth. So we could settle that then, or do we wanna say who's going to be there now?
You should send something out in email.
I'll send something out in an email, and then we can determine, and then on, on the fifteenth, we just make sure that we're all good to go, does that make sense? Okay. Any other thoughts on Juneteenth? Great. We are on to the legislative update.
Just one of the bills that we have been watching actually, um, made it through. That was, um, that is a bill that allows pharmacists to prescribe birth control. Without, um, uh, a doctor having to prescribe it at first for a woman in Indiana. So, um, so that one did make it, a lot of, um, bills died. One that would have required, um, hospitals to ensure, um. Long acting, um, reversible subdermal contraceptive implants would have been allowed, and that one died. The one, um, allowing IUDs to go to a different Medicaid recipient. Than what they actually ordered for died, funding for lactation rooms in public buildings died. Uh, licensing of pregnancy resource centers, um, died, pregnancy accommodation in the workplace. Died, uh, the list, you know, that long, so, so the, you know, that was good. That the, um, bill, House Bill fifteen sixty-eight passed that gives pharmacists the right to prescribe.
Fifteen sixty-eight?
Fifteen sixty-eight.
That's good.
Yep, so, and the session ended, um, three weeks ago, so. So that's it for this year, hopefully.
That's amazing, how that, how quick that all happens. Great, uh, city council comments?
No, I'm just glad to have some time to be back, um, glad I made it in time. So I've been traveling, so I went to, well, and I had an election.
Yeah, yeah.
I just, um.
Congrats.
So, yeah, so, uh, I'll be here, be more present now.
For a while.
Yes.
Great, um, commissioners' comments? I guess the only other thing that we have not discussed yet, and is close, is, and, you know, we've been producing a lot of events almost, maybe a little bit too much this year. But, um, August is Women's Equality Day. Which is always a time that we have done something in the past. Um, so if, is it possible to create a committee to start thinking about what that is? Yes. I mean, I, I've been thinking, you know, uh, you know, it's an election year, it might be nice to have someone come in to, to really. You know, fire us up a little bit, um, I do think, I'm just, I'll say this now, I do think Deb Chubb is doing some really good work. It might be nice to hear what it is that is she's doing and ha- and her effect on women who are running across the state of Indiana. So I'll throw that out as one suggestion. I also started to wonder if there was something really unique and special that we could do that could also be another fundraiser. Because as you can see, we were down to what we said, we, we don't wanna be under ten, and we're close. So even producing this event will bring us over that number, I mean, you know, we'll be under that number, so. I don't know what that is, so just hence why we would need a committee to think through that.
Are we gonna do an annual meeting, um?
And then the annual meeting, um, we, we did it in.
Oh, you did it in March, right.
No, no, we, we did it in, um, August or Sept- we did it in September, so it would be September. So we would need to set that date too, not right now. I mean, we could, but, uh, we need to set our September annual meeting, which, our annual meeting, Lori, we always do it somewhere else. We do it with food, and we have a little more time to kind of focus on what are, uh, on what we want to accomplish in the next year. Um, this year, we've, in, maybe the last year and a half, almost two years, we've been doing women's health, maternal, um, and infant mortality. So I do think it's time to kind of, even though we haven't fully rounded out that issue, we're still, you know, discovering things. And again, another reason why it's good to do this opioid one, because substance abuse disorder is the number one cause of maternal, um, mortality. So that we are still in that realm, but next year we probably need to switch to another category, another subcategory. Um, that's entrepreneurship, education, leadership, whatever we determine at, at that September meeting.
So Women's Equality Day is August twenty-sixth, that's a Saturday.
Oh.
Oh, it is, okay.
Which is in August twenty-sixth?
That is interesting, I mean, I mean, it, it, I think there's some, it could be something fun, like, I don't know what if there was something that people came in and out of. And that people did have to pay to come to it, but there's, I don't know, I'll be on the committee, great. Bonnie's on the committee.
Is the lead participant, or might be partner?
Um, yeah, partners are always good to have.
And breakfast is cheap, something like a breakfast, I know that, um, I have a radio show that day. For a few hours, I didn't realize it was Women's Equality Day, so that's even perfect, but, um, maybe some type of breakfast. Cause it's just cheaper to, to have a breakfast.
Yeah, so you gotta get on the committee?
Well, I'm trying to, I, I might be able to help, but I, I have a commitment from nine to twelve that day, I have a radio show that day.
Already committed.
Yeah, and I didn't even realize it, so I just looked up Women's Equality Day.
Yeah. So Bonnie and myself will, I'll definitely be on that committee, anyone else wanna join that one?
I mean, you can still put me on that.
Okay, great, I know you'll be here always good, riffing. All right, um. And any other commissioners' comments? Great, public comments? Did we vote on?
They didn't vote.
Salvation Army? They need to vote, oh, thank you, thank you, we need to vote on the Salvation Army. They have, um, requested a thousand dollars for this program. Thank you. I really love the idea of, um, mentoring someone for an entire year. I think that's a really powerful, um, approach to dealing with, um, poverty. And changing one's focus and ability, um, whether they are, is, is a great program. In hearing that they have had some success with it since it has been running for a few years.
It's a good program, I went through the training, uh, train the trainer for it.
Oh, cool.
It is a good program.
Cause it's true, just a one-time help doesn't do enough, okay, so really understanding that is good. I will say that we, I think that we funded them maybe, um, five or s- five years ago for this, when they were first doing this program. So, um, we have not funded them for a while.
And we do have sixteen thousand, six hundred dollars left in our account. And we had agreed that we would not go below ten thousand, so, um. We had, you know, a lot of people last month, four, four requests, so. It might slow down now, we don't know. But we can, you know, we'll let it in the future if we need to.
Yeah.
And if we do a fundraiser in August, that would certainly help.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I mean, because the, giving away funds is one of our main things that we do, now, it's sort of community, I would say, so.
I've got a great observation that, you know, they did lose a chunk of money, cause they didn't get the Michigan City.
Yeah.
Enrichment.
Enrichment Corporation.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, that's big.
That's big, that's fair, that's a lot of money to not, yeah. Would anyone like to?
I move that we donate one thousand dollars to Salvation Army for the Pathway of Hope program.
Any one second?
Oh, second.
Who was the second?
Right, right.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Well, hopefully all the organizations that we're funding will, will have all their supporters come up to whatever fundraiser. That we, uh, put together. Say, hey, we need you to show up.
Yeah, yeah.
This is why we're able to give money.
Exactly, exactly. I mean, it, you know, we've never done a fundraiser every year, and in a way, this would be putting us on that schedule. So, you know, just something to, to think about, but I also do think we should approach the city this year. Because we've not received funding from the city, and we've done a lot of good work for the city. Whereas a few, number of years ago, the city gave us twenty thousand dollars. So, um, we don't really want. But I've also thought about like ways that we need to interact a little bit more, um, with informing the city council more often. About what we're researching, not finding out too, um, so that there's just. I don't know, but more dialogue about what we're, we're, we're researching and learning.
But I, I think, I, I do believe that, um, even with our events, and especially with the, the event we had previously. There are certain, uh, boards that I think people see more anyway, sustainability, Women's Commission. I, I believe that, um, the annual report, and was prob- was, was good. As long as we have events and keep telling where we're at, I think that's a good thing. Yeah, because I don't think, there aren't many boards that are doing that.
Yeah.
So, just understand you're doing way, your commission is doing way more.
Okay.
Than most boards, so.
I, I mean, I guess I did come in a little bit guns to fire, because of governance issues and where we are in the world right now. And that we really do need to pay more attention, we actually do need to get more people involved and, and younger people, and I don't know how we do that. I mean, you know, look, our events skew a little older, um, in attendance. So then how do we really get our voices, or, or help young people understand the value and the importance of this? Um, to be invested and involved, if we don't have local news, we don't have these commissions to like, either do something within the community. Then, then no one's gonna know what's happening.
That's true.
So it's, 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 uh, I think a tricky time, and, um, I guess one, I, I guess I'm still trying to understand what exactly. The commission for women is about, and how we do make a bigger impact in, in our community, um.
Yeah, well, I was talking to my physicianist, uh, my, my physician assistant, you know, my doctor assistant.
Yeah.
And, uh, we were talking about how most young girls don't really know a lot about their bodies and how their bodies actually function. Or whatever, and, uh, so I was talking to her about possibly, uh. Getting somebody from the school, school nurse, maybe, um, to come in at one of our meetings and, and, you know. Talk about young girls and teenagers and, um, how their body. Like functions or whatever, and how, why it's so important that they read manuals or look at, um. Health, uh, magazines and health shows about women's health. And so that we don't get run down so quickly.
Well, another option that we can think about, um, when I, I had a service project over in South Bend with, um. Another women's organization, and our project, we worked with the Y W C A, cause they had, you know, the shelter. And we did a body image, um, uh, something for the young, the teenagers. And we just used the Dove program, they have a whole confidence, self-esteem.
Oh, really?
And then we, we put together, um, care packages. And then, um, we did, uh, let's just do the road review over there. Uh, uh, discreet, discreet packages, and, and we gave them to schools. Cause a lot of, um, young ladies, they can't afford sanitary napkins and, so we delivered discreet, they're cute. Pouches, so nobody would know what they were.
Right.
But they had deodorant, and they had pads and tampons and things, and the little discreet packages. That, um, I think I dropped off, I, I took a box and dropped them off a couple of places, but. Nonetheless, something like that may be of interest, that now that's something, cause yes, we can collect.
That sounds great.
And we can, um, do a collection, have collections of sanitary products, and, and we just made the little bags up. And, um, and then, um, like I said, the Dove, it's already together, we don't have to, we invent the wheel. But they have, their website is good, um, it's about body image, self-esteem.
Who's website is this?
Dove, Dove, the soap company.
Okay.
And we use their present, they give you the PowerPoint, they give you, it's everything.
Okay, that's great.
So that might be something that we could possibly do at a school, maybe that's something where we get more visibility by going to a school.
Yeah.
A middle school and inviting them to a presentation or something. And then we give everybody a discreet, you know, deal or whatever.
I think we do have a class up at the A.K. Smithson, you, there is a class, you do?
I said there is a class, um, a nursing class, a health class, uh. At the A.K. Smithson, but we wanna reach those kids before they get there.
Yeah, I'm thinking junior high.
Yeah.
I think we'll put a little, or something with a logo on it, with a, like some type of confidence or inspirational note on it. You know, something like that.
I'll check that Dove website on.
Yeah, yeah, and it's been several years, but it was, yeah, it, it was a good program, they give you everything.
That's always a good topic, body image, I mean, any age.
Especially junior high.
You didn't, did you do that here in Michigan City, or was that South Bend?
That was South Bend, that was at, um, but just, so that was, um, we did that at the Y W C A. But another group, the last two years, um, and, and again, that organization predominate South Bend. We did, uh, a presentation at the high school, each, each year we picked a different high school. And all the, like, girls got a package from that.
So our first thing would be to contact superintendent to make sure that's something they would approve.
And that's the tricky thing about girls' education and any kind of awareness education. Is that we, you can't do that in the schools here in Indiana, so it's, um.
Well, and this really is not, yeah, this isn't.
This is different than like sexual.
Right, so this is really about self-confidence and body image and, uh, giving them hygiene.
Yeah.
Products versus that, so which is, just is important, that's a step when you start having a cycle. I mean, you know, that could be an embarrassing situation that you're in junior high, and all of a sudden, something happens.
Yeah.
And you don't have anything, or you're not prepared.
Or you don't have a clue.
Right, and, and it hasn't been explained to you, and, but having those accidents. People don't realize how often they can, they happen.
And they start before middle school too. They start like sixth grade.
Yeah, but it's, those products are expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are.
All right, I like that, I like that idea, that idea's really great, yeah. You know? Um, good, excellent. Anything else? Lots of, so I I always enjoy when we get to, you know, you don't have enough time, keep going, but we will. Um, so we will adjourn, oh, motion, I have to make a motion, motion to, someone else, motion to.
Motion.
Okay, I'll put in motions to adjourn, adjourn.
I'm with you.
To end the meeting.
Yeah.
Second. I'm second, but great, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, aye, all right.
Is that you, the right?
I'm double five.
Six, four, five.
Meeting adjourned, next meeting is June fifteenth.
All right.